We're going to call to order and if everyone could join me in the pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Irene, would you please do a roll call?
Yes.
Irene, are you with us?
I am. Are you hearing an echo? I apologize. I'm...
You sound okay to me.
No.
Okay, you're not hearing a double sound then.
No.
Okay, sorry about that. Yes, so...
Well, I'm always first and I'm here.
Okay, my apologies. Councilmember Bagby.
Present.
Councilmember Brigham.
Here.
Councilmember Cruz.
Here.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Turner.
Here.
And Mayor Walter.
Here.
Thank you.
Can we have a report on a closed session, please? Jose?
And Mayor, yes, we had one item under closed session that the council considered no reportable action was taken.
The agenda.
I didn't hear that. Gus, you're cutting out. I didn't hear you.
Can anyone else hear me?
Now we can.
I got you now.
Okay. Any changes to the agenda or deletions?
Members of council, there's no, staff does not have any changes to the agenda this evening.
Thank you. Next is public comment. Can everyone hear me, please?
You, I didn't hear you say anything about conflict of interest.
Okay, I did. Do you have one, Mary Ann?
Yeah, on item number nine on the temporary housing standards because of the tiny house issue that I have.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and excuse you on that item when it comes around.
Okay.
Next is public comment. Anyone wishing to address the city council on items that do not appear on tonight's agenda may do so. Please understand that we will not be able to respond to your comment. But please, if you have anything to share with us, raise your hand and let Irene know that you're waiting to say something. Irene, do we have anyone?
Mayor, there are no public comments. And then I just wanted to briefly announce that our AV tech is out of town, so I have another hat on me tonight. So that's why I apologize for the sound issues. I'm hoping it appears that we are on YouTube Live as well as live on Zoom. But if there's any issues and people reach out, please let me know and we will have a recording this week back online.
Okay, thank you, Irene. First item is presentation update on the refinancing of Cloverdale Successor Agency bonds. And David, well, Susie, I'm sorry, is that you?
Mayor, I'm happy to stand here. This is an update on the status of the refunding of the successor agency tax allocation bonds from 2015. This action previously came before council, starting in March and subsequently in May. And at the time, we reported to the council that the refunding would generate savings for the taxing entities. And we're really glad to report that we were able to lock in what are really considered historic low interest rates for our refunding of those previous bonds. And as such, we generated significant more savings that will benefit our taxing districts here in Cloverdale, particularly the city of Cloverdale, but also our local school district and fire district. And with that, I'll turn it over to Bill Falwell. Bill was our fiscal agent that guided us through this refunding effort. He's going to provide a presentation this evening and really highlight the savings that was generated by this refunding effort. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Bill. You're on mute, Gus.
So I was telling Bill he's on mute, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're still on mute, Bill.
Said unviewed.
There you go. Oh, then he muted again.
Irene, could...
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
We can.
Okay, you can't see me, but I don't know why that is. But in any event, I'll just talk, okay? All right, well, David, thank you for that introduction. I appreciate the opportunity to have worked as the successor agencies municipal advisor on the refinancing. And we came out just great. It was really, it was a long process. As you may recall, the successor agency board authorized the refinancing back on March 11th. Okay, right as the pandemic really got going in full swing. And we didn't actually price the bonds or sell the bonds until August 20th or September 17th, August 20th this year, and then we closed on September 17th. But it worked out really well because initially, right after the pandemic hit, interest rates went up. That's because there weren't as many tax exempt buyers. There was a lot of fear factor. But then over the months going forward, things settled down and rates actually dropped to historic lows. So as we say in the bond business, I'd rather be lucky than smart. And of course, you want to be both. But the savings came out really, really well. And the total amount of bonds that were sold, if you add the tax exempt series and the taxable was a little over $21 million, okay, $21 million and $75,000. And I just want to, before I go into the savings, I want to indicate a little bit about the taxable series B. And apparently, Susie or Dave, you commented, but the city had some leftover or the successor agency, if you would, of bond proceeds from the original bond issues that were done back in 2006 and 2007. And typically, tax law would require you to take those bond proceeds and pay down debt. But our bond council said, well, you know, if we refund those unspent bond proceeds with taxable debt, then they can be spent on any project, you know, any authorized project the agency wants to do. So that was really a great, you know, analysis by our bond council that then freeze those funds up to be spent by the successor agency, you know, or city on different public improvements. So I just thought I'd mention that. So anyway, so I can, you want me, can you move on to the slides or do I do that? Okay.
Move then.
Okay, very good. So here's the finance team. Irene, you go on to the next slide. So this was the original finance team. You probably saw that at least a couple of times. But in any event, it worked out really, really well. We brought in another underwriter to assist with underwriting the financing. That was because of one investment banker who started off, he was actually laid off, Jerry Liang. At that point, we need to bring in another underwriter to fulfill the investment banker role. And I brought in, I recommended, I shouldn't say I brought in, I recommended to the staff and ultimately to the successor agency that Mike Kavanaugh, a managing director for public, Hilltop Securities come in and he did a great job. So anyway, but also then Almo Capital also shared in the bonds. And I think the way it worked out, that I think that Hilltop sold about 70% of the bonds and Almo about 30%. So they worked out. They had a prior relationship, so they worked great. There was no hard feelings or anything, so that was good. And then Dave Shai was the fiscal consultant. He did a great job, just outstanding work. And so anyway, so that, in having, you know, people like this that are experienced, that are well-recognized in our tax exempt bond business helps in selling the bonds. You know, they're all known quantities and it creates stability and confidence in bond buyers. So that's all. I can move on to the next slide. Okay, then one more. Thank you, Irene. So anyway, so we came out really great. Probably don't remember these numbers, council members, but back on March 11th, we were estimating gross savings, like net gross debt service savings, okay? This is taking into account all the costs of issuance and not extending the maturity, about $2,781,000 and change, okay? And we were able to achieve with the final pricing $4,508,833, okay? So that's an increase of over $1.7 million. So that was great, right? I mean, and the thing is, like, when you get started on these successor agency refinancings, you really, it takes, you know, all the different approvals that you have to go through. You have to get the proper approvals from the successor agency. And then you have to get an approval from the county oversight board. And then you have to wait till they, so they can meet with you. And then from that point, after you get their approval, then you have to submit it to the state of California Department of Finance. There's a lot of hoops you have to jump through. And it takes like roughly six to seven months, you know, before you're able to sell bonds. So there's a lot of market risk because we haven't real control over interest rates during that period. But we were very fortunate that the market went our way during that period. So anyway, so that's the good news on that. And we can, we just go to the next slide then. So this represents the net present value savings that were achieved. And that's, in other words, it's taking that $4.5 million and saying, yeah, but you don't get that all at once. So they discount that to what that, what that's really worth in today's dollars. That's the purpose of doing that. And the industry standard is that a refinancing should have 3% or better net present value savings. And we came out at 16.74%. And I might add that when we first came before the successor agency on the 11th of March, we were estimating net present value savings of just over 10%, 10.217% or $2,399,852. So we actually, we came out with net present value savings of about $1,474,000 more. I'm sorry to throw all these numbers at you, but, you know, everything, you know, just went so great. So anyway, if you go to the next slide, Irene. Okay, so this is, you know, this is the one that, this is where the shoe lever hits the pavement. And you can see that the city of Cloverdale General Fund between now and maturity of these bonds in 2038 is going to get $995,000 plus of savings. And the savings are really residual property tax revenue generated from the project area that are no longer needed for debt service on the bonds because we refinanced them at a lower rate. So that money, you know, that 995 will come to you, you know, through maturity. But then we're estimating like 50, over $55,000 a year of, you know, residual property tax revenue. That's general, you know, property tax, that general fund money. You can use that for any legal purpose. So that's great money. It's not restricted. And then on top of that, for the icing on the cake, you also are able to save on your retirement costs through maturity of like $585,742 and about $32,541 a year. So the total, you know, if you add, if you add all those numbers together, the savings, the total, it's like $1,581,000, looking at, you know, this general fund totals and the CalPERS totals. And if you look at that on an annual basis, you know, looking at the refinancing benefit for the city, it's just under $88,000 a year. So this was a huge win for the city. We were able to reimburse the staff out of financing proceeds for all their costs, you know, so the city was made whole for the time they spent on it. So it just had a great outcome. And one thing I didn't really mention in previous presentations is that the Cloverdale Fire Protection District, which, you know, is your fire department, right? They're also getting, you know, a benefit. I mean, not as much as the city, but they're going to enjoy another $13,423 and over the maturity, $241,000. So anyway, so the city really came out well. Typically, the public schools get the lion's share of the savings. I mean, you're probably aware of this because you all work in local government. But, you know, your property tax bills, you know, the public schools will generally get anywhere from 50% to 60% of the property tax revenue that you pay. You know, a lot of people who don't work in government, you know, they think that most of that goes to the city. It's not. It goes to the schools. But the public schools, which is good for them, are going to get about $2,333,000 of the total $4,508,000. And I went through and just counted it, added up all the public schools. And so they'll get about 52%. So the next time, staff, you're the mayor, you rub shoulders with your local school district. You can remind them that you put some money in their pocket. So anyway, because sometimes you never know when you need a favor from them. It's good to let them know what you did for them. So anyway, so that, that pretty much concludes my presentation. I just mentioned the interest rates on the bonds went from 0.85% in year one. And these were the yields to about 225. So it's just amazing. And I think I had another slide. Maybe I skipped over that. I apologize if I did. But yeah, so the all-inclusive interest rate was just a little over 2%. So anyway, so it was a great outcome. You know, I commend the staff. The staff was great. They got everything keyed up for us on the meetings. There's a lot of processing work. I commend the successor agency board. You know, it was kind of a risk. I mean, we kind of work on a contingent basis, but you do too. I mean, you asked your staff to work on this. We had, none of us had any guarantees it would come to fruition. So you, you know, the successor agency, you risked yourselves by having your staff engaged to help us. And it all worked out great. So I guess we all took some risk and it paid off.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Bill. Councilmembers, are there any questions? David, any comments?
Mayor, councilmembers, I just want to thank Bill Falwell for his expertise and guidance as our municipal financial advisor through this refunding effort. It really truly was a team effort. I think it reflects upon, you know, staff and their commitment to trying to find, you know, money for the city and our taxing entities, our partners. And I really just wanted to be able to bring this forward for council's review, recognizing that this effort, which, you know, really reflects the council's perspective to dedicate staff time to this refunding that, you know, ultimately saves not only our city taxpayers of money, but also saves our local partners in the way of our fire district and our school district funding. So for our school, our student liaisons, you know, be proud that your city is also working on your behalf to find financial resources out of the we pay. Really, the, this effort is, we want to acknowledge that really the council in supporting staff go through this effort and bringing on Bill to help us with it. I think overall, it's really beneficial for our taxpayer community.
Thank you, David. Councilmembers, any questions?
I have one question, Gus.
Mary Ann?
Yeah. How are they actually going to be, how do they get the money for the public folks that are listening? How is the money, this extra money that we're finding distributed actually to the school district and the fire district?
The funding, the savings is actually allocated to the taxing entities directly from the county. So it's, the county tax revenue will, you know, ultimately flow to them that would otherwise flow to pay the debt service on the bonds. So because they're savings, more of the, what are called residual receipts will now flow to, you know, the city and all the other taxing entities. So I don't know that they'll see it as a separate amount per se. It'll be wrapped into their, their normal tax allocation that they receive through the county auditor controller.
Thank you, David. Irene, are there any members of the public that have questions?
A public comment, Mayor.
Okay. Well, Bill, thank you again for all of your hard work and staff, thank you as well. And we will, we will enjoy that extra money that you, that you're going to, that you found for us. So thank you.
That's good. All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate the chance to work with you all.
Thank you, Bill.
All right. You have a good evening. Thank you.
Okay, next, next item is introduction of the student liaison, liaisons and the student reports. And for this item, I've asked our school city subcommittee chair, councilmember Cruz, to do the on it. So Marta, would you please?
Yes, good evening to everyone. And I am very excited to introduce our two new liaisons, Summer Lands and Jennifer Ramirez. And actually, they have prepared their own introduction. So please unmute yourself, whomever is going to go first. Summer, maybe?
Yes. Okay. Hi, I'm Summer Lands and I'm a junior at Cloverdale High School. So this year, I was presented with this opportunity and I am planning on studying law when I go to college. So I'm very excited to learn about how you guys, you know, deal with lots of things that come up in our own community. And being, my family has lived here for a very long time. So it's really cool for me to be a part of something like this and I'm very excited to be working with all of you.
And are you also going to have some of the news for us?
Yes, I asked our counselor this week if she had anything to report. And so far, she says there's not too many things that she wanted to talk about. But from my standpoint, we, as an ASB for the high school, have been getting together like these different social media platforms.
Please tell the audience what those, that acronym means.
Oh, the ASB is basically like the student body of the high school. And we all meet together and kind of decide like how our high school does certain projects or fundraisers and things. So recently, like, there hasn't been much to do, but we have made a couple of different social media platforms to reach out to everybody in the high school and just the community in general. And besides that, there has not been too much going on with the school district, but we are going to keep getting reports from the counselor.
Thank you. Jennifer? Jennifer, please unmute yourself. Is Jenny here? Jennifer?
Looks like she froze.
Oh, okay. Well, in the meanwhile, Summer, could you tell us a little bit of how this new experience has come about as a virtual student?
Um, my experience so far has been kind of interesting. It's been kind of hard to learn via Zoom, obviously, because a lot of people have like connection issues or it's just like hard for the teachers to present their material over Zoom. But from what I've seen, all of our teachers have adjusted very like thoroughly and they've gotten their material out to their students. And I think that as a school district, we should be proud of how we reacted to such a drastic thing that was thrown at us. But it's also like something I hope that we can move on from soon and figure out a way to, you know, do something that's safe for everybody, but we can also do more in-person learning.
Thank you, Summer. Jenny, are you back? Jennifer? Did we lose you again?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Now, go ahead. We can't see you, but we can hear you.
I stopped my last video so you could hear me. Hello and regards to everyone in the council. I am one of those, one of the two student liaisons. My name is Jennifer Ramirez. I am very excited to update the council about Cloverdale High School's events and activities. I am also really intrigued by what goes on in the Cloverdale community, such as events and upcoming agendas, such as updates on the coronavirus budget and how members in the council work efficiently to maintain our community. Some of my interests are reading history and learning more about my community. Additionally, I'm also a curious person, so I want to read it. I wanted to be a student liaison to see how everything occurs and goes in the Cloverdale community, most specifically in the city council. Moreover, distance learn has been very efficient in the Cloverdale High School. They have placed rules that there, there are no outsiders who are not students who show up to the class soon and disrupt our education. Additionally, sports such as boys soccer and volleyball have begun, but only conditioning. However, other sports have not. There are still ideas about the school reopening and COVID updates. If we did go back to school, we would have to do hybrid learning online and in person. WiFi with no disruptions in a Zoom class has improved for the most part. Lastly, the mail handle location has changed location to the Cloverdale High School at the Eastern. That would be all.
Thank you, Jennifer. Could you, and tell us a little bit more about your background and your experience as a virtual student?
Experience as a virtual student is that we've been learning together as a community since the coronavirus and everything. We've learned together, like teachers and students. And we also have like a one-day wellness thing where like they check up on students and we will...
Okay, you muted yourself. So you're having follow-up with students and professionals. That's very good. Councilmembers, I had the pleasure to meet with the two students for about an hour and a half the other day. They are quite an interesting couple. And I look forward to hearing about their meetings with you. So they will be meeting with all of you on individual basis, either by Zoom or with a very nice mask at Plank or somewhere else. And they're also interested in meeting the senior staff. So this is a set of students. It's going to have very many questions. And tonight, we're very happy to announce that the school system has $2 million from tax, from the tax base. So that's a good news for you to share with your, with your liaison teachers. And that's about it unless anybody has a question or a comment to the students.
I just have one comment. Welcome. Super thrilled to have two more student liaisons on our council. Please be empowered to speak up on any of the topics that we're on. Don't think that you need our permission outside the mayor acknowledging that it's your turn to talk. We really want you to participate. Your point of view is valued. And I can't tell you how many times something was right in front of me and I couldn't see it till somebody with a different point of view showed me it was there. So I welcome you to be that tool for us. And thank you for joining our efforts.
Thank you, councilmember Turner. Thank you, council member Turner. Council members, any other questions?
I'd just like to welcome them aboard.
Yes, ditto, ditto here. And I see council member Bagby giving a thumbs up as well. Look forward to, to working with you and, and hearing what's going on at the high school. And I look forward to meeting with you. With that being said, council member Cruz, thank you. Very nice job and very, very good selection this year. Thank you. Okay, why don't we move on to the consent calendar? All items on the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the council unless any council member, member of the public or staff wishes to have an item removed and considered separately. Anyone looking to, yes?
Mayor, if I can make a comment about the agenda this evening. And I'd like to just make the comment now just because there is an item on the consent calendar. This evening, there are four items on the agenda that pertain to the November 3rd elections and the ballot. Item number eight is on the consent calendar is a legislative item asking council support for measure BB. On the regular calendar, there's also item number 11, item number 12, and item number 13 in regards to measure DD, measure R, and Prop 20. Just wanted to, for, for the council and for the listening public, provide just a, a quick update and brief primer regarding the ballot measures. There are, on, on the statewide ballot, there are a total of 12 measures. They're known as propositions 14 through 25. The, the other 13 propositions are, you know, didn't qualify for, for the ballot. And those, you can look at the California Secretary of State website for why they didn't qualify. But of those, of those 12, those are again statewide ballot measures that are assigned numbers by the Secretary of State, Alex Pegula. The local measures are signed letters. And they're assigned letters by our Sonoma County Register of Voters. And the, the ballot measures were assigned letters L through D and then AA through DB. A number of those local ballot measures do not pertain or will not be on the city of Cloverdale ballot or for voters in the city of Cloverdale. But there will be specifically five local measures that the city of Cloverdale residents can vote on. That includes a measure O, which is a, a mental health sales tax measure. Measure P, which is the ILLERO ordinance. Our local measure, which is measure R, it's a proposed extension of the utility user tax. And then two additional measures, measure BB, which is the North Sonoma County Healthcare District, and measure DD, which is the Sonoma County Transportation Authority Go-Sonoma measure for the continuation of a sales tax to support transportation projects. So I just wanted to, again, provide just a brief overview of the difference between propositions and, and local ballot measures and why some have numbers and some have letters as we move forward to the agenda this evening. So that's it for my comment, Mayor. Thanks for the opportunity just to provide a brief overview on the ballot items that are on your agenda tonight.
Thank you, David. Council members, with that being said, the consent calendar is waiting for recommendation.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Brigham, motion by Turner. Irene, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, council member Cruz.
Aye.
Council member Brigham.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner.
Aye.
Council member Bagby.
Aye.
And Mayor Walter.
Aye. Okay, the next item is item number nine. Consider adopting an urgency ordinance extending temporary housing standards for an additional year. And council member Brigham, you're gonna recue yourself, please?
I am.
Okay. With that being said, it looks like this item is, Kevin, you're on stage.
Mayor, Councilmembers, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. This item is the extension of the urgency ordinance, which is, which allows temporary housing in certain circumstances. We did discuss this item at the September 23rd council meeting. At that meeting, it was discussed that we, we would bring forward the ordinance for consideration of an extension for one year. At the same time, staff will start working on kind of a workshop, a future workshop where we're gonna bring back some ideas that might make some of these temporary emergency housing permanent, maybe under some kind of permitting regime. Some examples may include, you know, allowing habitation of RVs, fifth wheels on private property with permits, facilitating the construction of tiny homes. So our recommendation tonight is that you adopt the urgency ordinance and direct staff to return in the next few months with some ideas on how to potentially make some of these changes permanent and make them permitted. And we can establish permits to, to allow some of these uses based on what the council's direction is. Probably would, we would take it to Planning Commission as well for our recommendation.
Thank you, Kevin. Council members, are there any comments at this point?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, just as, just by way of a comment, I, I, I just think that's the right direction to move in. I think that there are a lot of pieces that we, that we like that just need to be incorporated into, come out of the urgency ordinance and come into our, our, our permanent list of rules. So I, I think that that's the right approach is just to move forward in a workshop manner and start with the Planning Commission. I think that's a, a good way forward.
Thank you, council member Bagby. Anyone else? If not, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to the public for public comment. Irene, is there anyone wishing to speak to this item?
Hands are raised, Mayor.
Okay, well, there is a, there is a, an ordinance on the table if somebody would like to move.
I'm making a motion here, title only. Looks like make a recommendation to adopt an urgency ordinance entitled, an Urgency Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale, Amending Cloverdale Municipal Code Sections 15.28.210 and 18.05.030 to continue providing additional housing options within the city of Cloverdale due to the significant loss of housing within Sonoma County due to several wildfires that impacted Sonoma County in October 2017, 19, and September 2020, approving a related SEQA exemption for the municipal code amendments.
I'd like to second that and thanks to Vice Mayor because I lost my place in the packet.
Okay. Irene, can we have a roll call, please?
Council member Brigham.
We recue this.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Council member Bagby.
Aye.
Council member Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner.
Aye.
And Mayor Walter.
Aye. Thank you, Irene. And Kevin, thank you for that report. Next item is the item number, oh, Mary Ann, could you come back in?
I'm back. I'm here.
Next item, item, item number 10 is consider cancellation of the city council scheduled for November 25th and December 23rd, basically due to the holidays. And this item is Irene's?
That's correct, Mayor. Thank you. So yes, the item is before you for your consideration as traditionally regular meetings that fall the week of a holiday, major holiday week or next to the actual holiday is canceled. And of course, if the council chooses, we can hold special meetings in between the two dates before or after. Or we can go ahead and continue with both the November date that falls the week of Thanksgiving, the day before, and then for December, it's the week of Christmas, which is two days before, I believe. But of course, it's at your discretion.
You might be on mute, Gus.
You're absolutely right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just said, council members, if you'd like to weigh in on this, I, I tend to think that everybody would probably be in favor. So any thoughts?
Yeah, this sounds reasonable to me.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, as much as I will miss everybody, I would move the item and also volunteer, especially in the era of Zoom meetings, if we need to have an emergency meeting. I think it's, it's easy for us to all make ourselves available. So I would, I would move the item.
That's a good point, council member Bagby. Staff, you do realize that if you need us, just call the meeting and we'll scramble and get together. So.
Right.
Anyone else?
No.
Do we have to solicit a public comment on this one?
We're gonna do that. Anyone from the, okay, thank you, Irene. With that being said, staff, I think you have your direction.
And I think, Mayor, I think we were looking for a motion for this.
There is a motion and we need a second. If I, if I may be so bold, Mr. Mayor.
You help yourself, absolutely. Seconded by Turner. Do we need a roll call?
Yes. So, council member Brigham.
Aye.
Council member Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner.
Aye.
Council member Bagby.
Aye.
And Mayor Walter.
Aye. Jason, did you wanna add something to that? I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, sir. No, we're good. Thank you.
Okay. All right, next item is item number 11, which is considering endorsing, endorsing measure DD. And David, I think this is your item.
Mayor, members of the council, happy to address this, this item on the agenda tonight. Continuing with our legislative theme, included in your packet is a resolution endorsing measure DD on the November 3rd, 2020 ballot. This measure is known as the Sonoma County Transportation Authority Go-Sonoma Transportation Sales Tax Measure. The ballot measure is asking the voters to support extending the existing quarter cent sales tax for an additional 20-year period. The current measure M tax expires in 2025. So it's, you know, it's still a few years out under the existing taxing authority provided by measure M. This item did come before council back on June 10th to consider the, in support, the, the expenditure plan that was part of the ballot measure that was submitted to the register of voters. At that time, the council unanimously supported the expended, the approval of the expenditure plan. Measure, this measure DD, if approved by the voters, would generate an estimated sales tax revenue for transportation projects within the city of Cloverdale of approximately $157,000 annually. And in addition, other funds would be available for specific projects on a competitive basis, you know, as they're brought forward to the SETA Board of Directors for consideration. And, and, and the Cloverdale City Council does make an appointment to the SETA Board of Directors currently. Council member Bagby serves as your representative on the board. The item tonight is requesting your endorsement of the measure in part because it supports local transportation projects, not only in the city of Cloverdale, but, but countywide. At that point, I'll, I'll turn it over to council if, if you have any questions or comments. And, you know, certainly let us know for staff if you have any, there any, any specifics that you'd like to discuss about the measure.
Thank you, thank you, David. Council member Bagby, would you like to lead us off on this?
Oh, sure, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I wanted to get this agendized. I know that, you know, each of us can, can sound off on whether or not we're going to endorse this, this item. But because it's such an important to, to communicate to the, the voters of Cloverdale the importance of this measure, you know, anything that we can do to help. I think it's, it's important for us to do as a council. First of all, I would just remind folks that, you know, this is Cloverdale's sole source of local matching funding for roads. That's exclusively for roads. So that means that this is the flour in the cookie dough. If we don't have flour and we might have butter and eggs in our pantry, we don't have cookies. So we can't, you know, we can't get federal or state matching funds if we don't have a local match source for roads when we're going out and applying for grants. That's the first thing that I wanna remind the council of, the, and the public. The, the second is that, you know, in the midst of COVID, this is actually the importance of, of this revenue source as a source of economic development and keeping the economy going is even more important than it would have been when we, you know, first embarked on, on this renewal. So I would wanna remind the council members that it has an important economic development component to it, to it as well. Thirdly, I would remind the council that if this measure doesn't pass, Cloverdale and each of the municipalities and the county are gonna be on the hook for the price of putting it on the ballot. And that's gonna be, that's gonna come out of our general fund. So it is really in our best interest to, as a, as a council, for us financially moving forward, to do everything we can to, to communicate to the, our, our voters how important this measure is. So with that, I'm, you know, I'm happy to answer questions or, or, or point out anything else in the packet that you have questions about.
Thank you, council member Bagby. Any other questions from council members?
I have a question. Besides roads, this can be spent on bus service and other things also, Melanie?
Yep, that's also in the work plan, so.
You broke up on us.
Yeah, that's why I, sorry, that's why I had to bug out earlier and restart my computer. I think my connection is a little tenuous. I, I apologize. Yes, the, the work plan consists of roadway, bus, bicycle projects, pedestrian projects, and smart. Yeah.
And restriping some of the roads, and restriping some of the roads too, so.
Absolutely, yeah.
Trails, yep.
And, and to, to address council member Brigham's question, 179, page 179 of your packet, which includes a copy of the local ballot measure DD, it breaks down the
The ratios.
The ratios of expenditures for the transit systems within, in Sonoma County, including Sonoma County Transit, the Santa Rosa Bus System, and Petaluma Transit. So, and then it has different buckets for, for transit service for which funding would be provided.
Yeah, I read the, the piece, but I just wanted the public to be aware that it's not just roads. It can be bus service and other things also.
Right. Okay, well, council members, I'm gonna open it up to the public. If there's anyone in the on, audience, Irene, that would like to address the council on this?
Currently, there are no hands raised, Mayor.
Then I'd like to bring it back to the dais for somebody to make a, a motion on the approval of the, of the resolution. Council member Bagby, did you have your hand raised?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I actually do, is there a resolution page, David?
Yes, it's page 145 of your packet.
I am really having trouble with navigation tonight for some reason. I don't know why. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm getting there. So I, I will, I will recommend the item by title only.
Okay.
I'll second.
Irene, can we have a roll call, please?
Of course. Vice Mayor Turner.
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham.
Aye.
And Mayor Walter.
Before I vote, let me just read that resolution, just so there's no mistakes.
I'll probably cut out.
City Council, a resolution of the City Council of the city of Cloverdale endorsing Measure DD on November 3, 2020, ballot known as Sonoma County Transportation Authority, SCTA Go Sonoma Transportation Sales Tax Measure. And I vote yes. So it's unanimous, the full City Council will support this measure on the ballot. Okay, let's move on to another endorsement. And this is item number, one second. Item number 12, which is to endorse Measure R. David, this is yours as well?
Yes, Mayor, happy to address this particular item. The item before council tonight is a resolution of the council endorsing Measure R on the November 3, 2020 ballot, which is known as the City of Cloverdale Utility User Tax Extension. It's important to note that the voters passed Measure O, which established the utility user tax in November of 2014. The Measure O established a 3% utility user tax with a sunset date of January 1, 2023. That Measure approved the establishment of the 3% utility user tax on telecommunications and cable services within cities. It does not apply to water or wastewater services or utilities. In July of this year, the City Council was presented with a survey of local voters from Godbe Research, which supported bringing forward a ballot measure to extend the existing tax. And council supported maintaining the tax at 3% and extending it until otherwise determined by the voters. What we're asking for council tonight to do is to consider whether endorsing Measure R. The ballot measure that was, the ballot language that was ultimately placed on the ballot provided the following question. The voters maintain important city services, including repairing potholes in streets, installing city power backup systems for PG&E power shutdowns, preparing and responding to a natural disaster and health emergencies, maintaining rapid 9/11 response, supporting youth and teen programs, and other services. So Cloverdale's measure extending the existing voter-approved utility user tax at the current 3% without increasing the rate until ended by voters, providing $445,000 annually, exempting low-income seniors and requiring citizen oversight with no money for Sacramento to be adopted. But that's the ballot measure. That's the question that this ballot measure asks the voters to support. Important to note that Measure R, or excuse me, Measure O, the existing approved measure is a critical funding source for public safety. It enabled the city to fund an additional police officer as well as an additional dispatcher, which is critical to our, maintaining our emergency response within the city. Measure R does not limit the use of UUT revenue because it is a general tax, not a special tax. So the funds aren't restricted. So it does go into our general fund. It is important to note that if Measure R is approved, much like Measure O, there would be a local citizen oversight committee, which would review the annual reports and ensure that the receipt of utility user tax funds and the expenditure of UUT funds are in accordance with the adopted ballot measure, assuming it gets approved by the voters. The yes vote on this measure would extend the existing tax. It's not a new tax. It would essentially just continue or extend the existing tax that was approved by Measure O. If voters vote no, it would not extend the utility user tax, and the existing UUT would expire on January 1, 2023. As you know, the voters often look at the City Council to seek its opinion on key public issues and particularly funding issues. And we want to bring this forward to determine your support for a resolution to either support or oppose Measure K. And the resolution in your packet would enable you, as the council, to formally endorse Measure R. End of report, Mayor.
Thank you, David. You know, before I call on the City Council to weigh in on this, I'm just going to go first, if you don't mind. You know, this is $445,000 out of our annual budget, and it surely will leave a pretty big gap in our ability to provide services as we know them today. Let me tell you what I like about it, some of the components. First of all, low-income seniors can be exempt. I think that's really important. It's also not a tax on your water or on your sewer. You know, it is
Seven o'clock.
Sorry about that. It's not a tax on your water or sewer, but the seniors can be exempt from it. I also like the fact that there's an oversight committee that takes a look at this as well. So with that being said, council members, would you like to say a few words on this matter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
If I may.
I'll wait. I went first last time.
Okay. I would like to know, and for our constituents to know, how the oversight committee is selected.
Mayor, members of council, I'm happy to address that question. The oversight committee is ultimately selected by the council. In fact, this council did appoint a Measure O Oversight Committee. That oversight committee consists of three constituents. Carol Givernato, who is a resident and a former city manager and board member for the Cloverdale Fire District. It also includes the local businessman, Mike, the owner of Papa's Pizza. And third, but last but not least, Chamber Director representing the business community, Nina Hanchett. So that's the current oversight committee for Measure O.
And the other question to follow up on that is, how often does this oversight committee meet?
The oversight committee really can meet as they, once their form can meet as they see fit to, you know, review the annual reports and, you know, report on the use of the revenue. There's no set schedule.
And people in general can approach this committee if they have any questions or concerns, correct?
Absolutely.
And they would do so by communicating with you?
They could communicate with me. They could also communicate through the council. And ultimately, a report from the oversight committee should come before the City Council for review and consideration.
Thank you very much, and I am in favor of this measure.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz. Councilmember Bagby?
I can wait till deliberation, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Councilmembers, anyone else? Okay, well, then I'd like to open it for public comment. Irene, is there anyone there that would like to say anything on public comment?
No public comment, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Bagby, I guess this is deliberation time.
Sure, yeah, I have a lot of history with this measure. I worked on the Measure O campaign before I was a council member because I, you know, saw the gap in the funding and the need for our community to find other sources of revenue. So, you know, if, and I very much support this because it's, you know, it's one more source for road maintenance revenue that we desperately need. But it also, you know, if it doesn't pass, it really represents a defunding of our public safety and our police department. It represents, you know, one officer, one dispatcher, and also it covers the cost of maintaining on body cameras, which is an essential part of 21st century policing. You know, in addition to some other, you know, very important programs that folks in the community have insisted that we stay engaged on. So I'm hoping that if the voters see that the council is, you know, wholeheartedly in support of this measure to bring them the services that they say they want, I'm hoping even, you know, even though it has our individual endorsements, I think that having the support of the council carries some extra weight with folks, even though at this point, a lot of people have already voted. But if we can get some of those, the support of some of those late voters, I think it's an important step to take to say that, yeah, we stand together on supporting this spending. So I'm hoping it's going to have the support of the full council this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. If there's nothing else, there is a resolution on the table, page 184 of your packet.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation that Cloverdale adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale endorsing Measure R on the November 3, 2020 ballot, known as the City of Cloverdale Utility User Tax Extension."
A second.
Irene, may we have a roll call, please? Did I open this for public comment? I'm sorry if I didn't. I think I did.
Yes, you did, Mayor. And yes, roll call. Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham.
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner.
Aye.
And Mayor Walter.
Aye.
Thank you.
David, you have one more to go here, and that's item number 13, having to do with Proposition 20. If you'd like to enlighten us a little on that one.
Sure, thank you, Mayor, and members of council. And so for the members of the community that are listening, we're kind of switching from our local ballot measures now to the qualified statewide ballot measures. And this specifically is Prop 20, which is known as the Reducing Crime and Keeping California Safe Act. Proposition 20 is really geared towards amending a existing proposition, Prop 47. The Prop 20 has really four major provisions. It changes state law to increase criminal penalties for some theft-related crimes. It also changes how people released from state prison or supervised in the community. It makes various changes to the process that was created by Prop 57, for considering the release of inmates from the prison. And it requires state and local law enforcement to collect DNA from adults convicted of certain crimes. There's quite a bit of detail included in the agenda report that's taken from the Legislative Analyst's Office that provides, you know, kind of an impartial review on the proposed proposition. And that's summarized again in your packet. This was requested by the League of California Cities to be considered by the council. And it has endorsed Prop 20 on the November ballot and is recommending that member cities, which city of Cloverdale is a member of the League of California Cities, to endorse the proposition. Included in your packet is a resolution that would endorse Prop 20.
Okay. I'm sorry, end of report? Okay. Councilmembers, are there any questions at this time?
I'd like to make a comment.
Please.
Okay. One of the things that I think people should be aware of is the fact that it also addresses the serial thieves, basically. The people who always stay under that $950 limit, and that's what they do for a living, basically. And since it's a misdemeanor, if it's under that, they all very carefully stay under that limit and can do it over and over and over and over and over and over. And it must drive the police department insane. So this also fixes that in that it gives it, it's a kind of a wobble issue, they call it, where if somebody is doing it more than three times, I think it then becomes a felony instead of a misdemeanor. And they are, people are jailed. And the chief could probably speak more to this than me, but there were a couple fixes in there that I really, really liked because it is really frustrating for them. So that is why I'm in favor and will endorse this.
Thank you, Councilmember Brigham. Any other council members wishing to address this before I turn it over to public comment? Councilmember Bagby?
I'll wait for public comment.
Okay. Irene, do we have anyone in the public that would like to talk with us?
No hands are raised for this item, Mayor.
Thank you. Then why don't we bring it back to the dais and see if there's any other comments?
If there aren't any comments or questions, Mr. Mayor, I'm ready to speak to the other.
Let's do it.
Sure. This is an item that was, sure, yeah, this is an item that's supported by the United Grocers. And it was pretty contentious at the League of Cities. They're really pushing hard for this. And they're pushing hard for it for a really good reason. Just as, you know, Councilmember Brigham pointed out, it's that wobble issue, it's that $950 limit. I mean, there are people who make their living by, yeah, going in and getting, you know, that $920, you know, group of goods and, you know, and doing this repeatedly. And I think that that's, you know, that is definitely an issue that has to be addressed on a policy level. But just digging in and doing some research, and this is just a short list of some of the folks who are opposed to this. And I think it's because of, it's because it's a pretty imperfect proposition. The first one is League of Women Voters of California, which is a nonpartisan organization that we're all very familiar with. They're against this. National Center for Crime Victims, California Partnership to End Domestic Violence is against this item. California Alliance for Youth and Community Justice. The Public Defenders Association has come out in opposition to this. The Drug Policy Alliance is also opposed to this. And I think that's because there are pieces of Prop 20 that are crucially, absolutely have to be addressed. But it really does set us back on so much of the progress that we've made in California for social justice and to end the, you know, the school-to-jail pipeline. So for that reason, I'm going to urge my fellow council members to not support Prop 20 tonight.
Okay, anyone else? There's a resolution on the table.
I'll read the resolution by title only, if nobody else is speaking. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale supporting Proposition 20, the Reducing Crime and Keeping California Safe Act.
Is there a second on that?
Maybe not.
I'll second.
Okay. Irene, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Bagby.
No.
Councilmember Brigham.
Yes.
Councilmember Cruz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Turner.
Yes.
And Mayor Walter.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the next item, which is Subcommittee Reports. And the first one is Finance Administration and Police.
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor, our next meeting is on December 1.
Okay. How about the Planning and Sustainability? That's my committee, and we meet next week on the 20th. Public Works. Public Works? November 24th, are you still gonna have that meeting, or is that gonna be canceled?
It depends on what issues are there. If there's something pressing, we'll have to have it. Otherwise, we will um postpone it. And and then I am also with the School Subcommittee, and that is going to be on Monday.
Yes. And and I think I'm, Councilmember uh Turner, Vice Mayor, am I still filling in for you on that one?
If you would be so kind, please.
Yes. Okay, I know there was a conflict with your schedule, so Councilmember Cruz, I'll be joining you there.
Thank you.
And how about, how about the City Fire District Subcommittee? That was, that's actually tomorrow, is it not?
That's right, we're gonna be meeting tomorrow. Um, Ma- Marianne and I both can't decide who the chair is. I have to go back and look at the minutes, but but yes, we will be there tomorrow. It's uh 5:30. I'm really excited to talk about some of the vegetation management uh opportunities that the county may have available uh through the Fire District, as well as an update on fire season. And incredibly excited to share during Good of the Order that our bond re- uh reinvestment efforts have uh created some revenue for them as well.
I'm sure though, I'm sure they'll appreciate that. Um, how about the, while the Homeless Community Advisory Group, uh, we're still trying to come up with a date on that. With that being said, any other council reports that uh you'd like to share with us?
I will, I will uh submit my written report, but in the meanwhile, I want to um bring to the attention of the Council that thanks to the Citrus Fair, the Senior Center, and Latinos Unidos, we now have a weekly uh food distribution uh through the Redwood Empire on Mondays from 4:00 to 5:30. And uh I need to appeal to you and to constituents to to uh see if we could get some volunteers to help out in the distribution. And it doesn't have to be every Monday, it could be one Monday a month or twice a month. But uh we definitely need volunteers to help distribute the food and pass out information regarding COVID and other sources of uh support for people who are unemployed, underemployed, uh ill with COVID or recovering from COVID. That's my main.
Okay.
Um, appeal.
I'd like to add a little bit to that. Um, that the resilient Cloverdale that's been meeting, um, well, was meeting every single day, seven days a week, at noon for a few months. And now it's down to uh once a week. It went from two full-time, even on Saturdays and Sundays. Um, but I have to say that um I'm, I couldn't be more pleased with the way everybody stepped up and volunteered. If you need volunteers for the uh food distribution, um, I think Jimmy's got a list of volunteers that he can help you out with. But I gotta say, Katie from the Citrus Fair, Melanie from um the Senior Center, and Ezekiel. Um, he's great. Uh, Giaf uh with Certs is really paying a lot of attention to this and helping us a lot. Um, and it looks like um the Citrus Fair is very shortly going to be uh equipped with um a hardening of their structures so that we'll actually have power there, even if the power goes out with generators. I have never, it's been a long time since I've seen a group of people that came together and actually did something. I mean, they really moved forward and kept their nose to the wheel. And I gotta say, Daniel Holmesley, um Kay Wells's son, and his sister. Um, and um, well, David Kelly also was in there fighting all the time. So I was talking to um Katie today, and she said that they feel very comfortable in that they feel they can now activate it if we need it, the center, and that there's enough outreach that um it's all working really well. She's confident that it can be set up within an hour or two and be ready to go. So I just wanted to shout out to those guys. They're doing a fabulous job.
Thank you, Marianne. Anything else, council members, on council reports?
I've submitted my own writing, Mr. Mayor.
We received that today, thank you. Um, next is uh Legislative Reports, anything?
No reports, Mayor.
City Manager, City Attorney Reports?
Mayor, Councilmember, just a quick update, um, in particular for our community. We we were notified by the National Weather Service that we are gonna be experiencing uh are under a heat advisory as well as a wind advisory, really over the next two days. Uh, and concurrently, the parts of Sonoma County are subject to a public safety power shut-off or PSPS. The Citrus Fair has been uh established as a, as a PG&E Community Resource Center. So there there are some services available there, including device charging um a- and and Wi-Fi that's supported by by PG&E. Um, a- a- as mentioned by Councilmember Brigham, there's a a fair amount of activity uh at, and discussed at the Resilient Cloverdale uh weekly meetings. Uh, quite a bit of work relative to uh COVID and working with the Latinx community. Uh, Alma Bowen is very active, uh, working with La Plaza. La Plaza is, it was funded through the county, and um their initiative really is to, you know, lead a uh what what I call a community-led, culturally responsive, uh equitable uh response to addressing the needs of our Latinx indigenous community uh that are affected by COVID-19. And I think that's very important to try and address the impact of COVID uh uh on on our sensitive populations. Um, the Citrus Fair is also engaging in training, uh shelter training, and they're they're gonna have that training in their first schedule. It's next, next Tuesday, uh, and they're they're really working on on uh getting the appropriate training and getting or, you know, getting even better organized to be able to uh really scale up their shelter operations. And um, we we also heard as part of the Resilient Cloverdale that the uh Cloverdale Library is gonna be hosting uh community coffee in Cloverdale on uh Thursday, October 29th, uh from 11:00 to 12:00. And um, you know, that's in addition to uh coffee by the mayor, Mayor, Mayor Walter. Uh, that's the, that's the end of my report, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I have a quick question.
Please.
David, th- this may sound tongue-in-cheek, but I promise you it's not. As the result of the heat advisory, even though there is a PSPS plan for, I think they set upwards of 54,000 customers, has there been any discussion that they're concerned about the ability to provide power with everybody potentially that's not experiencing a PSPS utilizing AC or other things during the heat event?
Yeah, there was uh this afternoon, uh Cal ISO, which is the uh independent system operator for our electrical uh transmission system within the ci- state of California, uh did issue a flex alert. Uh, so there is some concern that we could e- exceed our, our demand could exceed exceed our available supply. Uh, so Cal ISO is uh recommending that um residents in the communities do their part to to conserve energy. You know, really, sort of for hours of about 3:00 PM to about 9:00 PM maybe. At this point, it's just a flex alert. It.
Okay. So David, real quick, I'm sorry, you you offered some time parameters, but your audio cut out pretty significantly there. Can you offer those time parameters one more time, please?
A- absolutely. So a a flex alert primarily applies between the hours of 3:00 PM in the afternoon and 9:00 PM. Uh, those tend to be the hours where uh residents, you know, use high-powered devices. It tends to be the hotter part of the day, so uh folks are turning on their air conditioning systems, they're they're cooking dinner. And the independent system operator is just asking that we, you know, do our part to turn down the thermostat a little bit, or maybe turn up is maybe the right way, uh, a- and, and, you know, maybe not cook a a meal that's gonna take hours to prepare, uh, just to tr- try to do our part to reduce energy uses during that timeframe.
Thank you for those updates, David. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmembers, um, anything else before we move on? Well, David, the next item is the status update on the current emergency, but did you already do that to some extent?
Yeah, I think my update uh regarding Resilient Cloverdale i- i- it applies to COVID-19. You know, we're really uh through the Resilient Cloverdale Initiative, you're trying to target strategies for addressing COVID um in addition to uh concerns about, you know, being in a, in a um, uh, you know, high-fire-risk environment. Uh, it it should be noted that the County Board is also actively looking at uh additional strategies to uh reduce community spread of uh COVID within our community uh because uh we we still are experiencing, you know, widespread transmission, and we're in that purple tier. And as we move into uh the winter season, it's just critical uh for our business community that we uh try to get down to that next year so we can, we can have additional business openings uh to support their economic activities. But also just for um, you know, i- ensuring we have a workforce and a hea- a healthier uh community.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I will add to David's uh report that the city has been helping with printing materials to distribute among uh the people who come for meals, uh, I mean, for food distribution on Mondays, and also throughout all the uh events that happen uh throughout town, especially with the Senior Center. So we're definitely working to uh promote healthier practices and providing materials on that.
Thank you.
May I ask a quick question?
A lot of. Sure.
David, could you offer just a high-level reminder for us in the community at large how individuals can seek services at City Hall during uh the COVID-19 pandemic and our alteration of uh operational hours?
Absolutely. Um, I, you know, I think the the easiest way to access uh City Hall is is really to uh give us a call. Uh, we are of, you know, i- i- even though we may not be staffed 24 hours, we do have uh a a call service that will direct calls uh to individual staff mer- staff members. Uh, all of our senior staff are available and have been requested to, you know, respond expeditiously to any, particularly any urgent uh matter. Uh, to see, to call um uh call our main line number. And we're also, uh, all of us are accessible by way of email, and we also are available through links on our website.
Thank you, David.
Okay, councilmembers, anything else? Irene, is there anyone in the audience that has their hand raised that would like to talk about anything? Seeing how we're wrapping it up kind of early here.
No hands are raised, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, with that being said, before I, during the meeting, I'd like to thank Summer and Jennifer for uh joining us.
Gus?
I'm sorry?
You didn't go to council direction on future agenda items.
Oh, okay. I was on a roll there and you interrupted me.
You were going good, Gus.
Council Agenda and uh future agenda items, anything?
Yes, I would like to request a closed session at our next meeting um to discuss property negotiations at Times Square.
And I had mentioned to uh David, our city manager, uh to secure a spot for presentation if um we are able to recommend a presentation um regarding a scholarship program for Cloverdale.
What program?
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Cruz. I think.
It's a scholarship program. It's gonna be discussed in the Subcommittee, and we're hoping that we could, you know, save a space for uh future meeting.
Right. Okay, well, we'll discuss that, I'm sure, at a Subcommittee meeting as well. Um, David, uh, or Jose, can we schedule a closed session? Um, or do you need to get more information from Councilmember Brigham before we go ahead with that?
I think, I think the request is a no, I think the request is an update, but we'll go ahead and we'll definitely reach out. But it appears to be an update, obviously not going into the details in open, an open session, but closed session, property negotiations, update on the current negotiations, we could definitely do that.
Sounds good, okay.
Thank you. For the next meeting. Yes?
Uh, the next meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, can I finish up my uh wrap-up here?
Yep.
Thank you. So Summer and Jennifer, I want to thank you for coming. Hopefully, we'll see you uh in the future at our meetings, either one or both of you. You're always welcome to come. Councilmembers, uh, it's about an hour and a half now, and uh it was good seeing you all, and look forward to seeing you soon. Be safe, wash your hands, and put on your masks. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have a good evening, everybody.
You too, Jason.